Finance Committee of the whole to order. We're at six o'clock. We're gonna start. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Hall.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Present.
Councilwoman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilwoman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilwoman Hinky. President Dawson.
Present.
All present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Melody, would you read the notice for the special call?
Ladies and gentlemen, your hearer notified that in accordance with the power vested in me by the statutes of the State of Indiana and the ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, I hereby call a special meeting of the Finance Committee of the whole to be held in the municipal building in the common council chambers on the second floor, 2229 South Second Street, Elkhart, Indiana, on Thursday, the 16th of October, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. The purpose of the meeting will be to hear and take action upon proposed ordinance 25-0-31. proposed ordinance 25-0-31 and an ordinance adopting the operating budget for the 2026 calendar year appropriating funds for such purposes and establishing the tax rate for the city of Alcart. Proposed ordinance 25-0-32 and ordinance fixing the annual salaries of elected officials of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026.
Go ahead with this one.
Proposed ordinance 25-0-33 and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for appointed officers and other salaried employees of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026. Proposed ordinance 25-0-34 and ordinance adopting a schedule of salaries and other compensation for the police officers of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026. The proposed ordinance 25-0-35 and ordinance adopting schedule of salaries and other compensation for the fire department of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026. The city clerk is hereby ordered to repair and cause to be served on each council member a certified copy of the special call in accordance with the law. Signed, Arbus Al Dawson, President, Alcart City Common Council, attested by Deborah D. Barrett, Alcart City Clerk.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-31 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-31 and ordinance adopting the operating budget for the 2026 calendar year appropriating funds for such purposes and establishing the tax rate for the city of Alcart.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this 25-0-31 on second reading.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, second by Ms. Hines. Counsel discussion. Mr. Hinky.
And then there's those of us who have amendments, and I hope that we would be receptive to those.
Yes, yes, that's, that's, yes, if you have an amendment, please make that right now.
Okay. I'm just gonna go through, through the budget book to certain areas. And I'll try to make it brief, and then before we get to the other ones additionally, there will be some amendment for consideration. Building and code enforcement.
Page number, please.
Page 23. There are 13 full-time equivalents with one open. Based on performance alone, I have a motion to reduce full-time employment by two code enforcement officers.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Motion fails.
On page 25, that would be clerk. And we were talking about compensatory time, and I needed clarification. I have in my notes comp time cost unavailable, and the, do we have a set amount, or do we know if there was an actual carryover amount on comp time?
There a motion?
I just needed information to make that motion.
Comp time does not carry over.
Deb.
Thing not used.
Deb, state who you are, pull the mic down a little bit.
I'm a Barrett, Alcart City Clerk.
Then pull it down a little bit so you can speak right into it.
Comp time is not carried over. It is paid out the last paycheck of the year. If anything goes unused, but it does not carry over.
All right, thank you. So there is no amendment on that particular item?
Special question.
Was that a motion? Okay, moving forward, city council, page 31. I know there was a motion to reduce the 50,000 to 25,000, I believe.
I was gonna make that amendment.
In professional services, I would like to see that we would reduce it by 35,000.
Is there a second?
That's line item number 4310400.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second saying, Mrs. Hines, what was your motion?
My motion is to reduce that same line item by 25,000.
The motion is second by Mrs. Hines to remove the professional services line by 25,000. Motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Hinky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
President.
Yes, sir.
Page 33, controller. Light item 4310400 is 65,000. Well, for two years, they have not met 50% of that. So it's still 65,000. I would like to see it reduced by 15,000.
Is there, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Saying none, motion fails.
And then moving on to corporate counsel, page 37. Light item 4310400. Professional services.
Pardon?
Decreased by 20,000. It's currently 100,000. The 25 approved budget was 40,000. Twice that is 80,000. So the 100,000, I'd like to see reduced by 20 to put it back to 80.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Saying none, motion fails.
It's getting to be a theme. There's a couple in here that seem to be trending under, but under, under fire. Page 45, we had 2.5 mil collected, 152 FTEs. So the question would be the rollover of unfilled positions. Do we know that number, please? And the reason I ask, I requested cash balances when we started this process weeks ago. I've never received.
What, what is this question specifically to the fire department?
How many rollover open positions and monies returned to the, the full budget of unused money of 24, 25?
Chief, can you answer that?
I'm, I'm not sure that I understand your question.
So we.
Rodney, identify yourself.
Okay, Rodney Dale, Fire Chief, Alcart, Indiana.
We budget for full staffing.
Correct.
But have we been full staffing for the last 48 months?
Yes, we were actually full-staffed earlier this year. We've had a couple of resignations, a couple of retirements. So those people will be, we're gonna hire again March 2nd. Well, we're in the hiring process right now. Those people will be replaced March 2nd, in addition to the, the five staff we're adding.
And then do your officers get paid residency status for living in the city limits?
Anyone that lives within the city limits, yes, I'd assume so.
And where, what line item does that come from?
No, that's, that's, that's incorrect. I'm sorry, chief.
Yes, that's correct. I already know where you're going.
The fire department, police department do not get that residency.
Right, none of the contractual, none of the contracted employees.
Well, as I was looking at the contract.
And, and their staffing, as I understand it, is contractual?
Yes, we have, we are, yes, exactly. And then we, we move to, once we, once we establish a number, they put it into the contracts so that we stay at that number. And then we can go up from there. We can't just randomly decrease it.
Thank you.
So to clarify, could you clarify that for me? So civilian people within the fire department get the residency bonus, but your firefighters do not? Is that what we're saying?
Exactly. That would only be our administrative staff. I mean, our, our secretaries, correct. Yes, only our secretaries. Right. Only, only people that live within the city that are civilian employees, not our contracted employees. Our firefighters are under a contract.
Okay. All right, since, because it was kind of mentioned in here, so it's a little bit confusing. I just wanted to clarify that action. That's all I have for you, chief.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
More, anybody else?
And then that would have been the same for the police, and I'm assuming the response would be the same for the police department as well.
Correct.
And then I would like, I don't see it. There should be a breakdown, and maybe we can do it for future reference. It is the prerogative of the council president to have a sergeant at arms, but I would like to know the cost of that moving forward. What is that annual cost for the time we use of the police department to cover that?
Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Not for this one.
He's got some more.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I'm catching up. Page 63, that is street department. Looking at gasoline, that seems to be relatively overstated. Even though it was reduced 95,000, it was 495. 250 is the estimate of use. So even at 400,000, we're considerably up there. I'd like to see that reduced by 100,000.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of second.
On page 69, that's parks. Line item 4220210. Again, gasoline overstated. You know, they're averaging $5,000 and $6,000 a year, but it's 12,000. I would like to see that reduced by 5,000.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Advertising line item 4330300. It's, it's never been, even at 20,000. And it's at 25, so a motion to reduce by 10,000.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Leave that alone. This would be page 101, environmental services, line item 0912, contract services. Just by trend alone, to reduce by 5,000.
Motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? No second, motion fails.
Unfortunately for you guys, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that today I happened to have lunch with a former controller, Jamie Arce, who reminded me of a famous statement made by one of my favorite people, former mayor Dick Moore, who said, "A dollar budgeted is dollar-dollar spent." And I know that the administration realizes what we're facing, and I know there are gonna be good stewards of that. So we just need to be mindful that just because it's budgeted, doesn't mean it's gonna be spent. Any other counsel discussion? Saying none. Melody, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third final.
Got a motion for Mrs. Hines, a second for Mr. Mishler, for third and final. Would you read this by title? And do a roll call vote, please.
Proposed ordinance 25-0-31 and ordinance adopting the operating budget for the 2026 calendar year appropriating funds for such purposes and establishing the tax rate for the city of Alcart. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-32 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-32 and ordinance fixing the annual salaries of elected officials of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026.
Can I get a motion, a second, to adopt this on second reading?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines. Counsel discussion. Mr. Hinky.
Motion to reduce the budget by 25, 2025 budget amounts for all positions.
I don't think there was any raise.
A motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Saying none.
Put a clarification on that.
Saying none, motion fails. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on proposed ordinance 25-0-32? Please come forward and do so. Saying none, we turn it back to the council. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Did we, I'm sorry, point of order, did we have public discussion for the overall?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Proposed ordinance 25-0-33, would you read that by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-33 and ordinance affixing the salaries and wages of appointed officers and other salaried employees of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026.
I get a motion, a second, to adopt this.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mrs. Hines. Counsel discussion. Mr. Hinky.
Motion to reduce to 2025 rates.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? No second, motion fails. This time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to proposed ordinance 25-0-33? Saying none, we turn it back to the council floor. Mr. Hinky.
Yeah, I'm just, moving forward is mainly what my discussion is about, but it's really a disparity of looking at a switchboard receptionist at 65,720 and then seeing a third-class patrolman at 67,000 within 2,000 of a receptionist. And I just have a hard time with that discussion.
Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please, on second reading?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Would you read this by title?
Third and final.
Second, Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Fish. Would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-33 and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for appointed officials, officers and other salaried employees of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-34 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-34 and ordinance adopting the schedule of salaries and other compensation for the police officers of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026.
Thank you. Got a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Hines, second by Fish. Counsel discussion. Saying none. Open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on proposed ordinance 25-0-34? Saying none, turn it back to the council. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilon Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion from Mr. Mishler, for third and final, second from Mrs. Hines. Got a motion from Mr. Mishler for third and final, second from Mrs. Hines, third and final. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-34 and ordinance adopting the schedule of salaries and other compensation for the police officers of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed orders 25-0-35 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-35 and ordinance adopting a schedule of salaries and other compensation for the fire department of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026.
Can I get a motion, a second? Got a motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Crabtree. Counsel discussion. Saying none. I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on proposed orders 25-0-35? Saying none, we turn it back to the council. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines, for third and final. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-35 and ordinance adopting a schedule of salaries and other compensation for the fire department of the city of Alcart, Indiana, for the calendar year 2026. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilon Mishler.
Aye.
Council will finish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Fish. We are adjourned. Don't leave. Counsel, do not leave until you sign.
Please.
Melody will halt, haunt you down tomorrow.
I will.